I'm going to get some snacks.
All right, you have fun.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, company man.
Now, you know Miss Willis has snacks over there.
She's gonna say, "After snack."
She's gonna tell everybody.
You know I got snacks.
Yeah, man. I suppose I know that. I get them every week.
I was gonna say it was my laugh.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, and then remain standing. Tonight's invocation will be by Pastor Flornoy.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God and Godfather, we bow humbly to your will, thanking you for this day, thanking you for our meeting, and ask you to bless the city council meeting, starting with our mayor and the city council members and their assistants. Ask you to bless every legislation, every plan, every idea. Remember the police department, the fire department, and our first responders, and our military. And we've completed this meeting on tonight. We ask you to be on our fair with us and see us home safely, being the mechanics of our vehicle. Our prayer is that you lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom and the power forever. Amen.
Okay, first up is citizens' concerns about items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary, and with the consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address the city council this evening?
Good evening. My name is Bert Haig. I live at 611 North Nettleton. I'm here with Twyla and Bob Kitchen. They're at the... My neighbors across the street on Glenwood. We're back after about a year to talk again about the commercial industry living next door to us, which is 125 Glenwood. We were here approximately a year ago. I passed out some pictures for you kind folks and tried to give you an illustration of what we're dealing with. And it's a heavy operating industry in what is clearly a residential zone. I don't even think it's deemed light commercial. If it was light commercial, we wouldn't be here. I'm gonna pass out a few sets of photos for y'all. These are just recent ones, all taken by the kitchens, if I could. Thank you. Here's a set. They're all the same. So, you know, we tried to emphasize last year, and I want to start by emphasizing again this year, that, you know, we want people to thrive and make a living and have at it whatever they excel at. But to just flagrantly be by actions incredibly rude to your neighbors for sustained... I mean, we're talking eight, nine years now, folks, of this is what we're living with. And then one of those photos is just the daily thing that you'd be highly annoyed at if you were Twyla and Bob Kitchen, which is, you know, heavy trailer, two-axle trailer parked right smack dab in front of your driveway every day. I mean, they just have put up with that forever. Their guests coming and going, always worried about hitting one of these trailers. The guy's out there working. He knows the deal. He knows when the police are active and when they respond to our calls. I mean, there's a record of our calls. We've... We're getting worn down, you know. Airhammers at 10 o'clock at night is like just something that happens in our neck of the woods. We used to have Mr. Doocy here with us too. He's just so sick of it, doesn't really believe anything's gonna happen at this point. But we've gotta do something because this weekend I had the Bonner Springs, the entire Bonner Springs cheer team at my house before they went to their state thing for their Friendsgiving. And they were in there hosting away, and I'm gonna blast. And while that was going on with all their cars parked around, the persons at 125 Glenwood had a black Fiero get off a trailer or some kind of rigged-up deal and head right to the kitchen's front yard. I mean, it's completely loose. The guy's trying to rein in a fugitive car. There's pictures of it in there. It's that black Fiero that's facing right at... You know, if you're the kitchens, you're their front door taking those pictures. That Fiero gets away. There's other photos there. One of them shows that he's constantly, you know, jacking up trailers or vehicles on trailers on the street with the jack handle hanging out. There's a photo in there of a five-gallon gas tank precariously perched when he's not paying attention to the darn thing. It's on the street. Constantly parked there at the Shidley and Glenwood intersection, which is right by the stop sign. One tip for the police would be, don't you have to park like a certain amount away from the intersection? I mean, he's constantly doing that. And it's frustrating. And there have been some activity that we noticed. You know, those green stickers getting on his vehicles on occasion, and they're... I don't want to come and say you guys have done nothing for us because we're just... We need more. I mean, this is a lot. Like, it's lit up like a Christmas tree at night, especially on the weekends when it's difficult for the police to have activity and come and meet our concerns. Just the hammering, it is constant. And I feel terrible for these folks because it's right across from them. It's next to me. But it's just constant. It's ongoing. It's dangerous. It's jacking up the street. So, what I think is crucial is you all have a difficult situation. On your hands, you know, what do you do about it? But he's in a residential area, and there's a case to be proved here that he's running a business out of a residential area. And it's a heavy commercial industry running right there. I don't know how many pictures you want me to take. I'll take... I walk my dog every morning. I'll take a picture for three, four months. If any of you think there's not enough evidence to figure that case out, that's what I do for a living. There is ample evidence. You have wonderful witnesses, wonderful witnesses. Some of... One of which, Miss Twyla Kitchen, this gentleman who lives there and runs this deal, told proudly how he's one of the biggest car scrappers in the metro, like number two or something, wasn't it? Something along those lines. I mean, he makes his own statements about the deal. You know, I think there's a case to be made. I think that if you allow this to go on, what's to stop a bunch of... Anybody that wants to can just run anything they want, flagrantly in front of their house like this. And it's not just in front of their house, but it's all over the place. Parts constantly all over the place. And, you know, if he did it in the right place at the right time, I'd say more power to him. So, we would like a couple of things. One, we would like somebody to talk to and see what's being done or some strategy about it. And there must be some hesitancy on your folks' part because you can't talk about investigations of one citizen's business with some citizen. I don't know what the deal is. But there's gotta be some way to facilitate some communication with us about what is the strategy here? I mean, this is an overwhelming amount of time we've given this fella to run this heavy business out of his... There's no... There's no way we don't have enough proof. I can take as many pictures as you want. He runs, oh, I'd say, six, seven wrecks a week out of the place.
More than that.
You know, it's just constant. I'll take pictures of every wreck and, heck, I'll sue him for loss of quiet enjoyment. Get his bank records if you want me to. I don't really know. I mean, that's kind of what I do for a living. If you don't know who I am, I... I'm a plaintiff attorney, so I'm not intimidated by the guy. We gotta do something legally to shut down... I mean, this is... Now, I'm not happy that this car got loose. And I'm really not happy when it happened, when it happened. I didn't know about it until Twyla told me about it, but, you know, that's a lot of, uh... A lot of cool youth coming and going that day with their own cars. I mean, he just got lucky that it happened to roll up into their yard and not where these girls were parking. You know, this is not fair to the people that are trying hard and being patient. And, you know, it's pretty awkward at this point. He knows, I'm sure, that I've been here before and walking my dog, and the guy hasn't done anything in any way in that regard. Cordial as I can manage to be, but this is going poorly. Whatever the plan is, we need to get a better plan. And so, so this is the time for citizens to come that are not on the agenda. I would... I'll follow up and see what I need to do to get us on the agenda. I'll follow up and find out what we need to do to facilitate some direct communication. Is there... I don't know what the system is. Should we have a commissioner from our ward be our liaison? And if there's difficulties because of privacy concerns and dealing with the citizen, that's stuff I deal with too, and I understand that. But there's a way forward here that needs to be addressed, and we're anxious to get that process moving in a more speedy direction. Did I miss anything that you'd like me to add? Now's our chance. Come on up, Bob.
You know, yesterday when he let the car roll down the driveway over and it stopped when it hit the curb in front of our yard, anybody walking by, it would've hit him. Because you're not listening... There's no noise till a car gets rolling. You know, you're not gonna be listening to somebody honking to get out of your way. There's at least seven or eight people walk their dogs every day through there. A little boy across the street, Eli, you know, six years old, he run over and sit and talk to the wife. He's not paying attention, but it's gonna happen. This guy is constantly doing it. Besides that, if you look at his side of the street, the asphalt is covered with grease and oil. If you talk to your people at street maintenance, the worst thing in the world for asphalt is dumping oil and gasoline and stuff on it. It's gonna come apart. It's costing you money. Besides my aggravation, he was out there last night at 11 o'clock when I went to bed. At 3 o'clock, he woke me up. He's still out there working. He was there at 5 o'clock this morning, working outside. He's got two cars right now out in the driveway with no hoods on. Parts are in the street, I mean, in the yard. He got them on jacks. He took the wheels off of them so they wouldn't roll down into my yard again. But this is such an eyesore, I can't sit and get rid of it. You know, I come and talk to... Mayor, I talked to you last year about this privately in your office, but nothing is happening. I don't... I'm at wit's end with him. And... But I'm afraid that if something happens with this guy and he hits somebody, they're gonna wind up and sue the heck out of this city. Because you know about it. You've known about it for a year. I mean, you know, I can't do anything. When I sit and complain, if I complain to the police department, they say it has to be criminal. They don't enforce codes. And I talk to everybody I can, and nobody seems to be able to do anything. And I mean, he brings two or three cars a day sometimes in. He leaves at 11 o'clock at night. He's back about 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning, waking you up, taking the car off of the trailer. You know, you can't get any sleep. You know, but we just need some help.
Thank you. Thank you all. You have any questions?
No, I'll just, real quickly, I'll just say I did meet with the kitchens, and it was a wonderful conversation. And yes, and I fully understand the aggravation that you're going through right now. I know staff has been working on trying to get this resolved, and it may be a case where... I will talk to staff again. It may be a case where we may have to look at some ordinance changes on our end from a council level to be able to maybe to bring more action to the against the individual.
Sir, that is what you told us last year.
Yes, and we have.
And does it take a year to draw a new ordinance?
Well, we have to be careful because...
Right, but a year?
No, I'm just saying is that, not getting in an argument, but with any kind of ordinance, you have to understand that what is the potential fallout? We may put an ordinance into effect that may have ramifications against other individuals within the city that may be not our good citizens, but it may cause them. So, let me get back to with staff again on it.
We're told that you would work with the city attorney in Kansas City, Kansas, so ours would be complementary to theirs. So, it would be the same, no matter if you were in Bonner Springs or if you were in Kansas City, Kansas. But I just don't understand who's dragging their feet on this. Did we fall through the cracks?
Well, actually, some of that has occurred. We have had ordinance changes in the way we handle policy. But it looks like we may have to address it again. This time, it may be a case where we may have to... We went away, went to more of administration, administrative citations, and we may have to go back to being able to maybe go back to the municipal court and have it in front of a judge.
Well, then, do we need to attend this monthly to see the progress that we get on this monthly? I want some accountability. I want to be able to follow this thing. I don't want to fall through the cracks again. And I certainly don't want to put up with it for the next five to 10 years, if I live that long.
I fully understand. You are... I will work with staff. If you want to, you can reach out to me anytime. If you want to reach out to me weekly, daily, monthly, however you want, and you can check with me, and we can find out what the status is.
Okay, so I'm gonna put it on my calendar then to meet with you.
That's fine.
Or email you or text you, whatever you prefer. I'm willing to do whatever it takes.
It is whatever your preference is. You can do any of those, any of the above. And we will continue to work with staff to see what we can do.
Okay, okay. That's all I want. I want some accountability and be able to follow it. I don't want it to fall through the cracks again or wind up on this guy's desk and he just pushes it under the pile. I don't want that. Please, I'm begging.
And if in your discussions, there's any additional documentation that you all need, because we had pictures from last year. This is just a thin set from just this week. This is just this week. This is just a week. That is not a problem. We can document the dates. I'll get back on that. Walk by there every day. But it's kind of depressing to have all those pictures on your phone, to be frank. But I'll do that. So, we'll do that together, and we'll make sure we facilitate a group conversation with Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council?
My name's Scott Harding. I was here the last meeting, and there was something brought up with low-income housing and apartments, actually. And I was just sort of wanting to follow up with that. I know in Kansas City, Kansas, unified government, they've done this special deals behind the doors and closed doors and special deals with zoning and planning and with the administrator, and it's cost the taxpayers a lot of money. And I would hope that if you guys... I don't know what you've got because you're saying everything's transparent, but you can't really find out any information. But what I would hope to see is I know that Amazon and all the apartments there that's close to City Hall down there, they're all getting the land for free. They're getting the zoning, planning, the permits for free. I think it's like $3 million just in permits just for one apartment complex. And then they're getting grants, I find out later on, and government grants, which the taxpayers doesn't benefit at all in Kansas City, Kansas. And they're gonna have low-income housing, so they're gonna pay like $100, $200 a month, you know. So, that's a problem for me and the taxpayers. We would like to see... Well, let's bring up Amazon for one thing. We put out $30 million for the land. We put out... Well, I say land. It's for the sewer and all this other stuff. And then the building, we put out $50 million in Kansas City, Kansas, which we're unified now, so it affects everybody, even Bonner. All this stuff does. So, it raises our taxes. What they did, the developers there, Amazon, had, let's see, $80 million, I guess it was total. And then what they did, they sold it to a foreign developer for $120 million. Okay, the taxpayers did not get anything in return. Nothing. And what I'm thinking, this is not the only time. It happened at the Speedway. Land was condemned and taken away by the taxpayers. They took their land, their houses, and then gave that land to the Speedway. Okay, here's what they did. They sold to the outfitters up there, that land up there to the west of the Speedway for $250 million. What did the taxpayers get in return? Nothing. The developers made money. Okay, then now the Speedway is selling 133 acres to Pilot, or no, Buc-E's, excuse me, Buc-E's. And we don't know what that's gonna come out, but is the taxpayer's gonna come out with anything there? No. What I'm thinking, the city start... Needs to start thinking about the taxpayers and getting a cut of these profits. And that's what I would hope that whenever you guys figure something out on any apartments or any projects with businesses or anything, you need to figure out where we're gonna come out, you know. And this is always asked by the commissioners. Well, what's gonna be for the taxpayers? Well, they don't really tell you nothing. That's just like Indian Springs. They want... We... It took the taxpayers $33 million to tear Indian Springs down. Okay, we paid that, everybody, unified government. So, that's a problem because what are we gonna get in return? Well, this new one, the developer's coming in. He wants... He called me personally. I think it was Thursday last week, and he told me, "I'm gonna be upfront with you." He said, "You want transparency." We want the land for free. And he says, "Then we're gonna need $750 million of taxpayers' money to build this thing. And it's gonna be a 10-year project, and they're gonna start in the middle." And I did mention, you know, that, hey, they need to come up with a clause in their contract that if they do sell the land or something to another developer, that the taxpayers will benefit. And he said, "Well, I'll mention that to the investors." Well, who are the investors? The taxpayers. We're floating the bill on that thing. But in 10 years, they're gonna have like a billion dollars total in it. But it's just like the American royal up there. Well, they run short on money, so they come back to the City Hall and ask for $75 million more dollars. Who do you think that's gonna come from? And they're revenue neutral now. You know, and that's a big thing, you know, because they need to really watch what the hell they're doing because we're gonna be swamped with taxpayer debt. They're already in like a billion-dollar debt, and that's not even counting BPU. BPU, their pension fund, this guy, this Bill Johnson, which is the main guy up there, he's getting $509,000 a year. Hell, the president don't get that much money. And you know who voted all them raises and stuff in? The board. And the commissioners do the same thing. We need to stop this stuff. It's not right. The... Well, his pension, just for one month, is $36,000. You know, that's sort of unreasonable. You were talking the other day, you know, about these apartments. You'd like to have a place to live, you know, when you get older. A lot of people can't afford this stuff. With all these taxes and stuff, it's getting ridiculous. You know, I'm only one man. It takes a city. And you guys are part of that city, and you're a big part of it. You make a lot of decisions. And I would hope you guys would think about this. A lot of these people, I don't know if they agree with me or not, you know. I have no idea. A lot of them do. I know there's over 1,490, no, 900-something people just on one deal on Facebook. There's another 899 in another one. You know, so there's a lot of different people that are talking about this. And you guys didn't want to go revenue neutral, and I know I talked to the mayor, and I talked to him, and he's always proud of being revenue neutral. You know, exceeding revenue neutral, that means that's gonna add more taxes. And people are sort of fed up. And I'm here for some of the people that I know that are elderly. They can't come up here because they don't have the money. They had to move. Because when your houses go up, your insurance goes up. Then your taxes go up. You know, it's just, you know, because they're coming up and paying more money than what it's worth. Like $30,000, $50,000 in our neighborhood. And that really hurts, you know. And we're trying to do something about it. I hope it happens. We're trying to get it. They took in more sales tax in Winnetka County than they did in personal property tax. So, what I was talking to them about was take it and do the sales tax and do away with personal property tax. That's what we were talking about, and we're hoping to do that. And then BPU, you're the guy who's not tied into it normally, but you guys were buying water from it, so you guys was paying a pilot fee. And we be... We in Bonner pay a pilot fee back to Kansas City, Kansas. And people say you don't, but you do. Because then it comes back. Some money comes back. Edwardville does it, and everybody else, Turner. You know, it all comes back, just like... I don't know. It's just like robbing Peter to pay Paul, basically, is what they do. And I, I hope you guys think about all this stuff. I know it's a big thing to tackle, but like I say, we got to tackle one thing at a time. And this apartment complex, I don't know what kind of special deals are coming up with that, but I would like to know, and I wish you guys would really think about this. You know, if it's got something to do with taxpayers and developers getting money and then they sell it to another developer and we get no cut back, I think it's a, it's a shame. Because we got to start coming and running it like a business, everything like a business. Not a nonprofit business, a profit business. So that way I can bring our taxes down and maybe people can start living a little bit better than what they are. You know, everything's really high right now, and hopefully things will change, but you never know. So thank you for your time.
I will just take a quick second to address. With the exception of the apartments, unfortunately, I know we feel the same aggravation you do, but this council has absolutely no say, no input at the, at the UG level on any of those projects that take place in KCK, nothing at all.
Right, I know that.
As far as apartments, I do believe in transparency. There is no developer's agreement with, with the developers. That was a private land sale, so there was no, city didn't give them the property, didn't buy the property. They did get Lytech funding from the state to help with their bonding of it. They are located, though, in what's known as an NRP, which is a Neighborhood Revalorization Program area. And so they, because it's multifamily, will receive a 75% discount for, 75% abatement for five years. And that is the only thing that they are getting. So after five years, they will be paying 100%.
That their taxes?
Yes.
That you're talking about, property tax?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's no abatement on any of the utility fees that would be collected, franchise fees that would be collected, any of the sales tax that, where they spend money in our businesses around town. They're, they're not collecting anything else.
Now, if they default on the loan on a lot of these bonds, I guess they call it, they default on them and then the taxpayers have to come back and pay it.
Nope.
So this way?
Those are private bonds and those are not.
That's not through the state? I mean, it is through the state, but the state's not supplying the tax money to, for it?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishes to address the council? Seeing none, we will then go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the November 12, 2024 City Council meeting, the minutes of the November 18, City Council Special Meeting, the Claims for City Operations, 2025-29 Capital Improvement Plan, City Council Meeting Dates and City Holidays for 2025, and the Public Use Request for the Holiday Lighted Parade and Mayor's Tree Lighting. Is there anything the staff wishes to have hold? Anything the residents wish to have hold? Counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Shannon. Will the clerk please call, record the vote?
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to new business. The next two items are basically in connection with each other. The first is opening a public hearing for the 2024 Budget Amendment, Amendments. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2024 Budget Amendments at eight, looks like about 8:03.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Blanks. Vote, please.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I assume we have a staff report on this?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tilly Littleplant, Finance Director. The, this hearing is to amend the budget for the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund due to the delay of the 138th Street Project. The Emergency Services Sales Tax Funds to purchase an ambulance server upgrade and police vehicle. The Street Projects Fund to, I think there's a couple sidewalk on the agenda tonight, and we got some additional sci-fi funding from Wyandotte County, so that's to be able to spend that money on those sidewalks. And then the senior center was just due to increase senior center trips, so the revenue comes in, but we have to have a budget to pay it out. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
May I give us the time?
8:05.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Gurley. Go ahead and record the vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kip? Oh, sorry, Gurley?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Wood?
Yes.
Mac Mahan? Motion passes.
Yes.
Now, okay, on to item number two now, the second part of this, which is to approve the 2024 Budget Amendments. I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the 2024 Budget Amendments as published in the here notice.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Blanks, and we'll go ahead and start with you, Ms. Blanks. Any questions, comments?
No questions. Thanks for your continued work on this, Tilly.
No questions.
Mr. Reeves?
Nothing else here.
Nothing here.
Blessings, Tilly.
Nothing further?
Thanks, Tilly, appreciate it.
That was pretty painless. So with that, then I would go ahead and ask the clerk to record the vote.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number three. Approve the reallocation of existing 2024 Emergency Services Capital Funds for the Fire Department Medical and Rescue Equipment. Staff?
Good evening, Chris Jennings, Deputy Chief. This request is for reallocation of already existing funds that were approved at, for the 2024 budget cycle under the Emergency Services Capital Fund. The transition of the department to our full-time status has really changed, as you can imagine, a lot for us. With that has come various changes in demands on our service and better review and understanding of where our current and future needs are. This has also included a lot of discovery on the challenges with a lot of our aged equipment that we've been keeping in service and benefiting from, from extended lifespans. This reallocation is really here to address consistency with the equipment, simplifying of training, expanding our capabilities to meet the needs of the community, reducing maintenance costs, improving uptime, and enhancing our current and future capabilities that we see. These are immediate needs that we have currently and also evolving needs that we're seeing in our near future. This reallocation of funds really does set us up for probably what we're looking at is about a seven, eight-year service life on this equipment. These are durable assets that are pretty vital to our daily operations.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anybody else from staff want to, or anybody from citizens would like to speak on this item? I would have you step to the side.
Since you're here, on these ambulance services and stuff like that, I don't know, you probably all hear me, but on these ambulance services and stuff like that for the citizens of Bonner Springs, is there any charge for them, ambulance services, to them?
I will defer to staff on that.
The ambulance service operates on a cost recovery basis. We don't, it's certainly not a for-profit entity. There is cost recovery that is involved, which is kind of a per, per user basis. We do provide a lot of services within the community here without charge, unless there's actually transport or a higher level of care that's actually done to our citizens. We forego some abilities to do charging to local citizens. So anytime that we have 911 calls to person of residence where it's, where it's an assessment and deemed that the services are not needed at that advanced care, those are essentially courtesy assessments and, and treatments that we'll provide for them. But actual engaged transport services, because of those costs of operations, there, there is some recovery costs involved with that that go through, for billing. And we have various contracts for both Medicare, Medicaid, and then also private party billing for insurance.
Just answered your question, Mr. Harding?
Pretty much so. I was wondering if we needed to, like the citizens need to actually turn it into their insurance to?
No, I believe the.
Is that how, how you would address that?
Yeah, certainly. The way the billing will usually work, at the conclusion of a call, once everything is submitted, there's classifications which follow kind of a Medicare, Medicare reimbursement rate schedule. Those are then billed out through a third-party billing company that will go to the person, typically during transports and submission to the hospital. Our record management systems that we run, we run something called EHR, which is basically a hospital data interchange, will collect information on insurance from that. So largely, some of that portion is automated, that that is already being addressed before many citizens will see that. There may be some residual cost to that, out-of-pocket costs and so on, but the vast majority of that is certainly covered through most insurance.
But it, it is actually filed by, by the city, the billing company, to the insurance before going to the?
Correct, yes, yes. So there's, there's kind of multiple steps to that. Obviously, the, the citizen, at, at the end of the day, is responsible for those charges, followed by the insurance companies, which is usually what we try to collect data on. And that's part of some of these new softwares that we've talked about, collecting data from the hospital back to try to reduce that burden on both our city employees for collecting that and also on the citizens for having to provide that. And then finally, is, is kind of that, that end payer model as well, which can either be Medicare, Medicaid, or through some of the other avenues that we have.
The reason why I brought that up, I know some senior citizens are getting the total bill, and that's why I brought that up. And if there's some kind of paperwork or something like that that needs to be filled out, I'd sure like to get a copy of it, and then that way I can post it and maybe get it out to some citizens and they can turn it in and fill it out, or copy it and fill it out and give it to their insurance company, if that's possible.
Certainly, anything that you're receiving for any billing should, should have, if it's coming from the billing company, would have information there to update insurance information. One of the risks that we always have anytime that we start processing payments is if any of that insurance information is not correct. A citizen, either in the city or outside of the city, will see the full balance of that bill. And usually, the, the process for that is to submit that through their insurance company or to contact the billing company, who will then do the processing of that. So there's multiple steps for that. And we certainly have billing company we, we can direct them to that will start with that process. And in the case of uninsured, there, there's some other avenues there as well, so.
Okay, so then I can call the fire department and find that out then?
Yep, yeah. Billing, the fire department itself stays a little out of the billing model, but we can certainly get you in contact and direct it to the, the billing agency that handles the billing, because that is a third-party agency that does the billing for us, if not some of the other avenues through the city.
Okay, I appreciate it. I appreciate that, and I'm just trying to help them out and I'm going to try to give them a call and help them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public wish to speak on this? Seeing none, and we'll go ahead and I would ask for a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize staff to reallocate previously approved Emergency Services Capital Funds to address current needs for medical and rescue equipment updates.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gurley and a second by Mr. Reeves, and we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Shannon, this time. Any questions, comments?
Nothing, but thanks, like the, how you answer and the information that you possess. You did a good job, thank you.
Does reallocating these mean that we'll, you'll need to reprioritize some of them for next year's budget? Are we creating a?
Between these reallocations and next year's budget, this is actually done in line with what we already have in next year's budget to address the needs in kind of totality for those specific pieces of equipment. This really sets us up pretty good for the next couple of years for those items, short of expansion or anything else beyond any type of scope that we're seeing. We went through an analysis of how we operate and what we need and where our mission should really be. And, and that, and between these reallocations and next year's budget, it addresses that.
So by not, not applying funds to these specific line items, isn't going to create a bigger, more expensive issue in three years?
Some of those, we've actually pushed off. We've either addressed them in other ways, or we've determined that some of those are not priority issues at this time. And, and we're pushing those off either much further down the road than just next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your detailed information and your cheerfulness.
Thank you. So the reallocation, does it allow, give you the funds that are necessary to do? Are you working within what you're reallocating, or are you still short?
So.
Or there's just enough?
Those fund reallocation address the immediate needs in respect to our, some of our biggest ticket items, which are our cardiac monitors that we carry on in our ambulance and first-out units. Between this reallocation here and also the, the budget for next year, where you have them listed as well, that addresses the totality of all that we need to replace, at least for the foreseeable future. So we're not seeing any, any need beyond that. To expand beyond that need would be increases in staffing and apparatus and everything else. So this, this is our target model for the equipment and staffing that we currently have to meet our current demands, which, which really looks at not only call volume, but also some of the expanding scope that we're seeing in paramedicine, which is our field delivery of care.
Very good, thank you.
Ms. Blanks?
No questions, thanks for your work on this.
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
Nothing else here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jennings, our, sorry, Chief Jennings, my apologies. Thank you for the very comprehensive information on that. As a side note, I hope that we have not had any of this equipment that we're replacing fail at this point in time.
No. Some of it is getting to the point that during maintenance tests, we're seeing some greatly increased maintenance costs. Those cardiac monitors are 12 years old. Typically, they have about a seven, eight-year service life. We're actually on Gen 1 monitors that we bought used over 10 years ago. The FDA has already listed those as not recommended for service. The mainboards in them, if there was a failure of that, that actually renders that monitor non-reparable. And, and that trade-in value that we see today on there, which is $6,500 per monitor, actually goes away very quickly because of the age, because there's, no other agency is going to pick those up on a second-hand market. And then we're also at a point that this year, if we don't move forward with, with this monitor, we're into almost $4,500 per monitor just in maintenance costs, which is battery updates and sensor updates and, and the yearly recalibration of these monitors forego. So there's actually a little bit more savings than just the, the purchase of it outright. So it'll reuse cost over time.
There is a good sense of urgency to.
I would argue, yes.
Yes. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I would have clerk call vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Chief Jennings, appreciate the information. On to item number four, sidewalk bid for sidewalk improvement project. Staff?
Good evening, Frank Abart, Public Works Director. Now you're on to the easy stuff. Breathe easy. The first item that I have here is a bid award for sidewalk improvement projects. And this essentially you had before you for design improvement. That was, gosh, way back in January. Design was finally completed on this work. Two actual locations, one on Morse and the other one on Second Street. We sent it out for bids. We received actually really good competitive bids. We had eight different prospective bidders submit bids. And we're at a point now where we're ready to go ahead and load, to a bid award to the lowest and best bid in the amount of $251,186. CM Concrete Incorporated, located in Olathe. This is well within our. This is well within our allocated budget for this year, and I recommend moving forward.
Is there any resident that wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the bid for the sidewalk construction contract to C.M. Concrete, Inc., in the amount of $251,186.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Blanks and a second by Ms. Long. I will start to hear with you, Mr. McMahon. Any questions? Comments?
Sidewalks are always good. Just given, out of curiosity, where would you say your highest bid landed? And then you selected...
Actually, you have the information.
Okay, so it's kind of small.
Squint.
Looks like the height bid...
Got to look off my phone.
Looks like $384,433.50.
Okay, thank you.
Out of the eight.
Small is relative.
Oh, that's small.
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, on the iPads, it's...
You can't just, you know, take the...
Thank you, Frank.
Ms. Woods?
Hi, thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Gurley?
Have we used C.M. Concrete previously?
We have not, but they have been used by a couple of other large cities and things like that. The city engineer took references, and they vetted this pretty well, so we feel pretty comfortable in moving forward. We couldn't come up with a reason to say no. Let's put it that way.
Are they able to start at this time of year, or will this be a spring project?
I'm going to think this is going to, unless we have a really warm winter, probably going to be spring. I mean...
I'm astounded at how expensive concrete is. Who would have thought that two pieces of sidewalk would cost $250,000?
Yeah. If, and by the way, there's no sidewalks in these areas. This is new sidewalk in these areas, so it is a good improvement.
From grade, yeah.
Yeah. And this is the end of November, so if you choose to award it, it'll take at least 30 days to put together the contract and the bonding information and all the insurance requirements and everything, so there's no way they'd be started before next year, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, Frank, I noticed that, well, the amount here was $251,186, but there's two areas, and I thought I read where there was another bid of $258, or the cost. Is this $251 for both projects, or is this...
Together. We bid them together to get the best deal, so, yeah.
Good, half the price.
Yeah, it was competitive.
I want to tell you, I really appreciate this, because this is something that I have been concerned about for a long time, watching kids from the junior high ride their bikes and walk on Morris Street. Fortunately, it's wider, at least at that location. And actually have seen parents with their baby in strollers and walkers and stuff. This is over the years, so I am glad, and it's also, hopefully, by next year, it'll have my granddaughter walking on a sidewalk instead of the street. So anyway, thank you, Frank.
Yep.
Ms. Blanks?
No questions, just looking forward to the completion of this project. It's really exciting, so thank you for working on these projects to further invest in the community.
Ms. Long?
No questions, thank you, Frank.
Yep.
Ditto. Thank you. Yeah, I was really surprised, too. We're getting two for the price of one, basically. Yeah, I agree with, understand and agree with Councilmember Shannon, but I think it's also important to note is Second Street, we have a lot of kids who depart from the grade school, BSE, who travel westward along Second Street. So the sidewalk is going to be very helpful for them as well, so. Now, we just got to figure out how we're going to get them across the railroad tracks safely, so. If there's no other comments, questions, I would call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number five, the sidewalk improvement project construction management. Staff?
Good evening, everyone. This is needed, because we need to have project management for the project, so we need somebody to do the inspections and make sure all the materials and the concrete and everything is meeting what our specified requirements were. We normally would do this in the initial design, but we were so uncertain about what kind of prices we were going to get, this was not included as part of the initial design. So we decided to just do this later. We wait until, well, do we have a project? Then we'll come back and ask for this. So essentially, this is for the engineering services related to finish this project.
Is it?
That's it, yep.
Okay, is anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one step forward, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the construction management contract for the sidewalk improvements project to Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., in the amount of $39,500.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gurley and a second by Ms. Blanks, and we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Reeves.
Full of confidence in Wilson &amp; Company. They've done work for us for a year or so.
Thanks.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thanks.
No questions, thanks, Frank.
Down here.
Not here.
Nothing.
Nothing, thanks, Frank.
So far, it's going pretty smoothly, so we'll go ahead and ask clerk to record the vote.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number six, the Second Street Waterline Improvement Project Change Order Number One, Mr. Reeves' favorite subject. Staff?
Good evening, members of the City Council. Now, in fairness, when I first awarded this contract, I told Mr. Reeves we would be back with a change order. So essentially, this is the waterline improvement projects. It's called the Second Street, but it's in that general area, and we've expanded that particular project to hit the $1.3 million mark that we needed to for the grant. And this is grant-funded. The inspection and all of the design work is not, however, grant-funded, and you'll see that in a next item. But essentially, the original contract was for $989,005, and this change order will bring us up to the $1.3 million mark for the grant. And it will, of course, expand greatly into the areas. There is no lack of needing for waterline improvements, especially in some of the older parts of town, so this was very easy to accomplish as far as getting these identified in a change order and moving forward. So essentially, that's what this is before you today. I feel obligated to make sure you know that if you approve this up to the $1.3 million, that's included as part of the grant, that won't cost anything. However, the next item on the agenda will come out of the city's funds in the amount of $26,700 for the additional design work and the engineering necessary to complete the work, because the grant won't pay for that. So with that, I entertain questions or whenever we get to that point.
Thank you, Mr. Abarth. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Mr. Abarth, have you moved to the side? Mr. Hardy, looks like he wants to speak.
Oh, I got a question. On all these additions on this, is it included in the '24 budget, or is it going to go into '25 budget? Is that my question?
Okay. The additions for the actual waterline work, the installation of replacement waterline and valves and materials, that's already included in a grant. So we have a $1.3 million grant, and this is essentially to allocate the money that we hadn't spent yet for that grant to get us up to that, and we're just replacing more waterline with it. Now, the part that is coming out of our 2024 budget, which we have funds for, is the actual engineering to design and, you know, get KDH approval for the design and everything for that, the engineering. That part's coming, that's $26,700. Okay? Is that answered?
And it might be important to understand that that grant is the ARPA, correct?
Yes, it is.
Which is...
Yes, it is.
We fought, and along with our commissioners that represent our area, fought to say, how about getting some of that ARPA funding that all went to the UG, how about some of it being spent in our community? And that's what is getting spent here, so.
Reallocated.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to execute the Second Street Waterline Improvement Project Change Order Number One for Conley Site Work and Utilities, Inc., for the amount of $310,995.
Second.
We'll have a motion by Ms. Blanks, and since you've already done one, Mr. Reeves, this evening, we'll go ahead and give this one second to Ms. Long. And with that, we'll go ahead and start here with you, Mr. McMahon.
No questions.
Ms. Woods?
No questions.
Nothing?
Nothing, thanks, Frank.
Ms. Blanks?
No questions, thanks, Frank.
Thanks.
Ms. Long?
Thank you, Frank.
Mr. Reeves?
Due to the talk I've had with Mr. Abarth, this looks like a very good way to go with this, because it is grant money, and so I appreciate the extra effort, Frank. You bet.
Hey, Bob, I'm surprised you didn't make the motion.
I tried to... I was waiting for it.
I will just say, this is, since it is the ARPA funds, and if you don't use it, you lose it kind of thing. And since we just recently put into service a new water treatment plant, we might as if we got an opportunity to replace some old water lines, need to do it, so. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Sorry for stealing your thunder, Bob.
I might add one more thing.
And I didn't ask for apologies.
We have to commit this by the end of this year, so.
Right.
And we have to actually build it before the end of next year, but this will not be a problem.
So with that, I would go ahead, if there's no other comments, questions, concerns, I would go ahead and have the call for the vote.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then that brings us on to item number seven, which Mr. Abarth's already kind of talked a little bit about, which is the Second Street Waterline Improvement Project, the Engineering Services Supplemental Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the completion item that we need to go ahead and finish all the design work and things like that, so that we can actually do the construction work. This does include the inspection and project management of this additional work related to the change order as well. So that's pretty much the summary.
Anybody, the residents wish to comment on this item?
No.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to execute the supplemental agreement, number one, with Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., for additional engineering services in the amount of $26,700.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mr. Reeves, and we'll go ahead and start here with you, Ms. Blanks.
No questions, thanks for getting all this done by the New Year, Frank.
You bet.
Ms. Long?
Thank you, Frank, no questions.
Mr. Reeves?
We'll go ahead here.
Mr. McMahon?
Thanks, Frank.
Ms. Woods?
You know so much about this stuff about which I know nothing, so thank you.
Nothing for me.
A-plus. Way to go, Frank.
I've got nothing else to add, so with that, then I would have the clerk call for the roll.
Blanks?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Abarth.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
That takes care of our regular agenda meeting, and then on to reports. So first up would be the city manager.
Amber Hogen, interim city manager. One thing I wanted to note, we have had a request to add information to our website on recent developments, so if you go to bonnersprings.org/developments, that's where you'll find information on all of the projects around town, and we are going to be constantly editing that and adding to it as we find new information. So it's a work in progress right now, but there is some information out there, and we'll continue to build on that. And if you have any questions that you hear that you'd like us to answer on that page, we'd be happy to. So just forward your questions to either myself or Megan, and we can add the information to that site. The mayor's annual Christmas tree lighting and holiday parade is this, is December 14th, Saturday. We invite all of you to come out. Will be closed this Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. I hope everyone has a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And then unfortunately, I have to report that our Public Works Director, Frank Abarth, has announced his retirement effective January 3rd of the new year.
Yes. I take back all my votes tonight.
So unless I hear differently from the council, we will post that position on professional organizations in our website, so that we can start getting some applicants in and hopefully not have a huge amount of time that we're not with a public works director. That's all I have.
Stick around, won't you, until the new person comes on?
January 3rd, he's done.
Okay, that brings us to council items. We'll start down there with you, Mr. Shannon.
Real quickly, I don't want to go into, I got on the city website regarding departments, community development, property maintenance, and property maintenance code, and there is some things on there about vehicles that wholly or partially dismantled, discarded, or branded, placed on jacks or blocks and stuff, and these are violations. If you're not sure about this, I would encourage you to look this up, and outside storage, auto parts and junk. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, and I think it's important that we do address this and find out, you know, and develop it further. That's all.
Ms. Gurley?
Couple things. Do we, we were told that we're going to start turning dirt at 120 Oak a couple of months ago. Do we have any update on that?
Hi, good evening, Megan Gililand, Economic Development Manager. I actually spoke to Wiley about this just a few weeks ago, because I thought it was going to be mid-November as well, but they still have some plans to turn into the city, which we've already told Justin, I think he's already left, but, you know, that those need to be reviewed quickly. And so I think they're planning on scraping asphalt in January.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the, that's all I have on that topic, thank you, Megan. On the waste management, if we were to make a change to our service, does the city have the ability to do an auto dialer message to the residents?
We'd have to look at Ncode to see if it has that ability. I think it has the ability to send out emails, and we can put notes on the bill. Are you talking about if we switch to the cart program, just another way to send out information?
They have the ability to make phone calls to everybody. I didn't know if we had that or not.
I think there's a way we might be able to. Part of the problem is, a lot of the, especially the older residents, we have landlines that no longer exist, or, so we've been trying to, Linda, when people come in, because not as many people come into City Hall anymore, but trying to get updated emails and phone numbers, but part of it is just not having that updated information to get to everyone.
They're an email address for the utilities department that we can encourage people to send updated information to as we're talking with people?
Yeah, we usually have them fill out a form and sign it, because to confirm that, Yeah, we usually have them fill out a form and sign it, because, to confirm that, you know, we don't wanna be sending it to, we never know where stuff comes from anymore, so.
Sure.
So, um, so we've been doing our best, but that's part of the, the issue with the communication is not having good phone numbers, or, we don't, we've gotten a lot more emails now, but, and most of the new customers coming in are, we're getting emails, but, um, there's some that we don't, we'll try to contact them and we can't.
Right, okay, thank you. Um, one concern that has come up from several people in town, and then I've also had recently some people visiting our town, the turn lane that's right outside the building has that one set of arrows that turns you straight into the median. Is there a way we can remove that specific set of turn lanes? It's as you're coming up the hill to turn onto Third?
We can review that, keep in mind that's.
Okay.
That kinda traffic stuff on there, so, whatever we would try to do, it has to be approved.
Okay, the one, as you, the one further south, south, in my head, it's south, between Second and Third, there's one set that turns into the parking lot and into City Hall, and then the next set up the hill turns right into that median.
There's, there's, and I know, we've had, we've, I've talked to staff as well about this, as you come up the hill on Cedar, as you approach Third Street, because of that middle third lane, it, there's an arrow in there to be able to do lefts, if you can move into it, you'll actually run into the median. And, but yet.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'd be nice to have something that stripes it out so that there, doesn't show that it's a left-hand turn lane, 'cause the median's true.
Yeah, and the, the median's got reflectors on it, but that's just not quite enough, I don't think. And final comment is, that I had for the first time in quite a long time, the opportunity to watch the replay of a city council meeting, since I wasn't here at the last meeting, the new microphones are outstanding, thank you to everybody for using the microphones tonight, because if your microphone is not on, you don't exist in the meeting. It, you, you can hear what's happening within this room when you're here, but if you're watching online, you do not exist unless your microphone is on.
And I appreciate the quorum that you did not call out that specific council member.
That means, they know who they are, uh, but anyways, the new mics are great, so it was nice to be able to catch up on what I missed. I'm done.
Onto you, Ms. Wood, you better hit your mic quick.
Hi, thank you all so much for all the work that you do in this community, it makes a huge difference.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Mr. McMahon?
Thank you, I, I wanna say first, the lights look great downtown, and, uh, for all those that participated in putting the lights up, I like that. Um, Megan, I, I'm still, I know the addition of the apartments is gonna create a lot of energies, I'm excited to see the endgame, it looks like we're figuring out parking, right, and, and all of that, but it's, it's so important we get the right establishments going, whether it's restaurants or something, 'cause they're gonna want that kinda stuff, I think, right? Um, so, um, I'm optimistic and I, and I'm truly grateful that you're, you're heading that up, right, it's gonna be great.
So yes, you're absolutely right, the communication with downtown as 120 Oak starts, and, um, that parking lot specifically closes, now, remember it is a private parking lot, they could close it tomorrow if they wanted, but they've been generous and let people park there. Um, one of the things I plan on doing as we get closer to actually seeing dirt turning is getting a letter out and personally deliver it to every business and talk about some ways that they can help the parking situation in downtown, um, by using the parking lots behind their building, um, you know, some of them do have rear entrances that could be utilized in a way for, especially like to-go orders and things like that, but that's something they should start thinking about. And I know Emily and myself have tried to brainstorm ways with the downtown businesses, how they can be successful during construction, like Kobe's and Southern Girls, it would really behoove them to have weekly lunch specials for the construction workers, and we've told them both that. And so, you know, we're, we're here to, to help them and, and help them be successful, we know that construction is gonna cause, um, you know, concerns, the street won't be closed, it'll be on that lot, but people do shy away in construction sometimes, 'cause they just don't wanna deal with it. So again, um, uh, I'll probably steal Emily's thunder, but, you know, continue to support local, keep going downtown, even though, you know, things are changing.
Sure, absolutely. I drove through the other day, Southern, Southern Girls, is what you call it, it's right by Kobe's, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, genie.
Yeah, and it was just, I, I drove by, it was kinda, I'm just gonna be honest, we was sad, there was three kids in there, they had their heads down, they're on their phones, 'cause it just wasn't, the, the business wasn't there, right, and I, I think, uh, business owners gotta be very creative to, to attract customers, whoever it may be, and for all the restaurants, you know, and, and that we have on Oak Street or in, in other areas, so, I'm sure they're working that out, and I know you're working with them, too, so, and then when spring rolls around and summer, then things really start to turn the other direction, so, thank you for all that you're doing. And also, a, a shout out to Pastor Fanoi, good to, good to have you on a consistent basis, your prayers mean a lot, thank you, sir, for doing that.
Ms. Blanks?
Um, I want to thank Amber and Megan, um, for, we'd had a conversation about creating that page on the website that is very transparent about projects going on in Bonner Springs, um, to include the, the information, or the funding, or the grants, um, and just true transparency, um, because I notice online, there is a mass amount of misinformation out there about who's purchasing the land, what's being done with it, what does taxes look like, what's, what are development agreements look like, um, I know we as a council and city staff strive for as mu- much transparency as possible, um, so, um, to those out there that, you know, do try to stay up to date, you know, please help us share that page online, so people can click and read and learn the facts. Um, so just thank you to both of them, um, for having that conversation with me and hearing me out of just how important it is for us to just get ahead of those, the misinformation, and just line out the facts, um, ahead of time, so thank you. Um, like Megan said, please just shop small, um, this holiday season, I know Amazon from your bed is really easy, um, but a lot of stores, uh, quarter four makes or breaks them going into the New Year. Uh, I know in downtown Bonner and other merchants around the area are, um, recognizing Black Friday and Small Business Saturday this week, so a lot of them will have great promotions and doorbusters, um, so just consider, in our own community, um, coming and supporting local. I do wanna invite everybody to the Chambers Luncheon, which is next Thursday, December fifth, it'll be at Lake of the Forest Clubhouse at 11:30 a.m. Um, our program for that afternoon is the, uh, three, uh, choir ensembles from the high school, um, and we have a really great caterer coming in, so if you're not registered, please join us. As of now, I think we already have seventy-five people registered to attend, so more the merrier. And then Von Trent is still accepting items for their Christmas baskets. If you know anybody who's in need, that needs help with a Christmas dinner, um, that lives in our school district, anybody can qualify for that, we, um, there is no, um, income qualifications or anything like that, if you, if you need help with a Christmas dinner to include a turkey or a ham, uh, please get with Von Trent, um, or if you are blessed enough, please donate products, or if you would like to help put together the baskets or hand them out, um, I do serve on their board, so please let me know and I can get you signed up. And then I do wanna promote, the Bonner Springs Police Department is doing Cram the Cruiser, uh, for toys for families in need in our area on Saturday, December seventh, at Bonner Springs Walmart from ten a.m. to noon, so shout out to the police department, um, for continuously putting that on, and every year, it just gets bigger and better. And then, as you may, or may not notice, a lot of our businesses, thanks to our Parks and Rec Department, Nathan specifically, we are doing a holiday window contest, um, it's been really exciting to see, uh, businesses like Harrington Funeral Home, UBT Mutual Savings, Main Street Credit Union, those businesses that might not necessarily decorate their windows, um, for the holidays, are all decorated right now, um, with the help from the middle school, so be on the lookout for, Nathan is putting on a map to the public, so you can drive around and see all the businesses that are participating, um, and then we will be doing a judging on Monday, December ninth. Um, December twelfth, from four to seven, is holiday shopping, late night shopping, sip and shop in our downtown, um, boutiques, and then, um, as Amber noted, the mayor's tree lighting and parade is on December fourteenth. We are looking for businesses, organizations, or residents to be in the parade, if you would like to join the fun on that. Um, and then just lastly, I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope everybody enjoys their very much deserved time off, um, and just one of the things I'm very grateful for this year, um, is just my first year on council has been absolutely incredible, and I'm just very, very lucky to work with those, um, beside me, and those who are housed right here in City Hall, um, you guys are amazing, so thank you.
Ms. Long?
I have to follow that, okay, we're really grateful to have you, too, Emily. I, um, just wanted to take a second this season, um, to talk about, one of the reasons why I stayed in Bonner Springs, um, several years ago I was going to move, and one of the reasons why I stayed was because this community really comes together and takes care of each other in so many different ways, but recently I was really overwhelmed with gratitude, I have worked with Feed His Lambs for twelve years now and serve on their board and the police department, and I think the fire department.